To live life the way you wanted to. To live life the way you wanted to. To be whatever you wanna be. To see how things can go the way you want it to. To see how things you can to see how things to see how things can go. You gotta move the way you can go. And the only way to do that is to the only way to do that is to understand yourself in a way that other people can't just do. Know yourself, know your story and know everything that you know. Feed into your intuition and love yourself because love is not just like an ornament of it's inside, an ornament of your soul. But mind you, you need to stay grounded. And whenever you stay grounded, people understand more about what you're doing than you gold. So the product is a web first, the core product is a website. Training and credentialing expert type of interpreters who deliver consistent ethical and high quality personality reading. You are you are trying to figure out you're trying to figure out you're trying to fi- figure out, you're trying to figure out what it means to live a life. You're trying to figure out, you're trying to figure out, you're trying to figure out, trying to figure out the way life can be. You're trying to figure out. You're trying to figure out. You're just listening to the sound. You're trying to listen to the sound. You're trying to figure out what is going on in this stream. And you want to know if the voice that you hear is good. So you're monitoring the situation. You're hearing the voice and it sounds good. And it sounds good. When it sounds good, you can live more alive, alive, alive. Alive when you are alive. The reverb. We have to, what I'm actually doing right now is I am just shifting the, just making sure that the sound sounds good. Need a little bit of no- noise cancellation. What else is too much? That's good. That is good. So I can be here and it still sounds good? Okay, so it sounds good. It still sounds good and I can continue to work. If I can do it alone, I will do it alone, but if you can find good people. But who are, who's going to work with you? You're so you need someone who believes you and you and trusts you. And you can, you'll do everything for that person. Can you do that for your family? You embody that change, you embody that persona so that whenever these things happen to yourself, you still can do what you wanna do? I don't know. I try very hard. Trying very hard doesn't doesn't mean it matters. Family support, yes. It's all about getting your own domain, figuring out if it works or not. You're trying very hard to understand things in terms of your family, your friends, yourself. It's the interplay between the AI and your self. So how do you create something that can embody those two aspects? You just put in side by side. Side by side and two messages at once. How do you create something that goes through two separate messages at once? And one side is my side, the other side is AI. You ask AI itself. Is it better to have? So you have typeplot.com. You're like, maybe you want, you want the home version. So you've got the home version, you're talking like, "Type me." And then what's "type me"? What does it even mean? So it doesn't mean anything right now, "type me" doesn't mean anything right now. It doesn't mean, but at least you have development potential. At least you can do what you wanna do in a way that you can figure out later, but Type Plot is about rising prestige, about collaborative effort. Unfavorable behavior will cause a breakup or separation from perfectly suited couples. Yes. So it's all about behavior. If you do unbe- unbehavior, if your behavior is not right, you, it immediately so needs to check for
Rockstar won't die. Listening to this kind of glory. I am cool, I am high, I'm a supernova in the sky. Rockstar won't die. Next to softer blue circle by the colors of the pills. Of the pills. I'm so cool, I'm so cool, I'm so cool. Mystical in the sand, who's your thing?
Never die. Hmm, yeah. But if you still want to listen a bit to the music, is it okay if I just add it a little bit? Will I get feedback? I don't know, maybe. Just try and see. Maybe you might not get feedback. Hopefully you don't get feedback, then, then you'll still be golden, huh? Let's see. Will it work? Hello, testing, one, two, three. The desktop audio won't work anymore? Okay. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. And the audio is working right now because we're just looking at the things right now. Uh, might work. It could work. It might. Because it's playing the sound. Hmm, okay. Shield, alright. Okay, okay. It's a link. Uh... Save your link. Yep. Everything that you said was said in a conversation I had previously with my good uncle. Just, just a... This... Uh, work that we do is... A lot of the work that we do in terms of creativity stems from our understanding of the world and how it shapes and forms our opinions. Not many people understand this. Being people like us. Yeah, it's just one aspect and the one aspect is subsequent in a totality of what it means to be human because consciousness is one. I'm always happy. But... It's, it can be crazy. That's why the, the type of work that I'm doing is trying to break out of this sort of medicated, over-medicated, over the clinical view of life. Oh, logos therapy. I've read the book before. I think I had the book. Basically, I'm talking to someone who's like me. I can't take those. If I did, I would like, oh my god. It would flip me. It would flip me. I think it stemmed when we were super kids, when we were really young. I thought that... I thought about life and the meaninglessness of life or the meaning, how they make life meaningful. Oh, I went there as well. I mean, this is that place, this is the, this is the place where I am being... You've seen the movie? Yeah, whether what we do is real or whether what we see is real or not, and not many people can see it. Who is Yifim Kim? I have no idea who's Yifim Kim. Kim. Uh... Human prot- protect... Oh, okay. And actually, it can be a superpower. But you have to temper it with control. Is it not? Just look at the brighter side of things. I'm sure things will work out for you. I have a web app called typeplot.com. I'm trying to figure out how to amplify it and use it for good. And to make money from it. I actually have figured it out, but I need some feedback. So maybe I don't really know, I don't really know a lot about what other people want from something that I created. So I'm trying to create a way for people to make money by becoming typeplot tellers. It's so that people can make money by talking to other people, learning about their circumstances and then, uh... Help people be congruent with their life circumstances. But it's really just a creative way of making things. purposeful. Yeah, I talked to Chit. To him. On WhatsApp. He is doing okay. He is doing okay. But from what I can tell I hope he can find meaning and purpose with the type of very high-stakes poker gambling sort of thing that he's doing. He's not doing doctor's type stuff anymore. He has become a professional gambler. But a good kind of gambler, I think. Because I encouraged it. I told him what to do and he pursued it. I gave him the tools to understand how to talk to his... Oh, your, that is your voice, the one that I heard? Oh my god, you sound great. I'm a singer too. But I don't know how to produce something like yours that is so polished. I will need more time to do. Oh, year effort, a year effort to do one song. Years and years just to make one song. Ah. Years and years just to... Yeah, of course. Anything takes... Anything that is worth it takes years or decades to do. Life will always be a challenge. Am I supposed to, um... But us Aucklanders are doing so good, we are all so successful in so many different ways. I'm really proud of everyone's efforts in whatever that you guys are all doing. You guys all deserve a pat in the back. It's just that my, my stuff takes so much time. It's, it's really cool. Um, how do I, yeah, listen to... Oh, I'll go William, another bipolar, Aucklander, come on. Yeah, but he's low eh. What's he had? Huh? He's a little low eh, but he, he's very creative and then he just... Yeah, it's a tattoo, a tattoo. Ah, okay, oh.
So, anything?
Yeah, anything, okay. Oh, because he messaged along a group, so, group chat, so what? I don't know whether Sangia may be a year older or, or like, maybe... We all knew one, we all knew who, we, we already knew already one. I already knew a long time ago. Huh? The one like, ah, he made da- Indonesian eh. Ah. Music oh, and creativity, we can all, uh, he, he, yeah. He, he, he's vocalist eh. Ah. Yeah, ah. Yeah, all of you guys are great. Are they like online or are they like not online or what? I don't know. Like, are they all online at the s- are, are they all online at the same time looking at what we're reading or not? I don't know. But... Maybe lah, I don't know. How do you even know if they're all online or not? Is it like... Of course lah, li- like... Do I actually have it or not? I don't quite remember, I forgot already the stuff, but do I s- Ah, cannot remember. That's the thing. I mean... If they ch- ah, ah... The Apple stuff. Okay, wait, wait, I gotta check for the stuff, but basically, I was... Um, we need some music, right? What kind of music? The, his music? Ah, let's listen to his music. Never Die. I, I actually... What? Because if I were to work on the practical aspects of, like, really never dying, in terms of using what we know of the consciousness and digitizing these aspects or those of ourselves into component parts that we learn from books and materials like what you said, to never die. This is not something normal people talk about, right? But it is interesting nonetheless. Would you like, uh... Would you like to have an LLM that was like you? A digital twin? Able to sing like you, talk like you, and is you in the future? But is not you because it is born from you? To plot out the ramifications of all our actions in a coherent manner? To be able to live in a virtual environment that allows us to slot in our consciousness in robotic shells? So that is quite possible with the work that I'm doing, but I am still quite limited by my understanding of how people actually work in the real world. All very interesting, but... O- 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 only crazy people will talk about all these kind of things, huh, right? Ah, I know lah, is this crazy or what? I don't know. Oh, yeah, yeah, the two crazies talking about never dying. Fun. Yeah. Fun. Um, listening to your music, your music, your... M N M on A I will will produce okay my gosh because no nobody knows how to um you know from right still have to work but it's pretty cool to talk to someone who has this sort of thing yes oh no another A W S E S one went down had a girlfriend fixes everything I need a girlfriend and he will fix everything right if you had a girlfriend oh okay oh right fording a girlfriend really I need ah oh yeah what's up yes golly what's up what's up dude what's up right yeah the it was the the thing that we did in the past what's up what's up dude what's up it's it's a it was a thing in the past mm-hmm where's my car don't remember dude where's my car yeah dude where's my car dude where's my car dude where's my car dude where's my car dude 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 video
last night Jesse and Chester had the most unforgettable time of their lives but this morning
dude where's my car
they can't remember a thing
it's Chrissy Boner the hottest of the hot
hi Jesse I had a really good time with you last night
uh if have you seen my car
well I saw the backseat
oh I'm talking about the whole thing
now the only way to find their car
no way we were here last night
look it's Jesse and Chester
is to find out what they did and who they did it to
dude you're a dude
last night
you guys got more important things to worry about where were you between the hours of midnight two A M
we don't remember
hey leave him alone he doesn't know anything
we are the recipients of instructions from outer space
last night you were in possession of the continuum transfunctioner
hey have you guys ever been to Uranus
go ahead and laugh we are used to being mocked
okay
are you Jesse and Chester
I don't know why
perhaps we will give you pleasure
that's us right here
if you give us the continuum transfunctioner
twentieth century fox presents the ultimate
it's llama stand very still
in high adventure
you got a tattoo
so do you dude what does my tattoo say
sweet what about mine
dude what does mine say
sweet what about mine
dude what does mine say
sweet
dude where's my car
what does mine say sweet what about mine dude what does mine say sweet you got a tattoo
so do you dude what does my tattoo say
sweet what about mine
dude what does mine say
sweet
dude where's my car
where's your car dude
dude where's my car
where's your car dude
dude where's my car
where's your car dude
dude where's your car dude it's not funny dude the car is gone
dude
I kept writing these sketches and then eventually I had a buddy a good friend of mine who lost his car he he had gone to a bar and couldn't find his car and we would drive around looking for it and about a week later we found it you know just around the corner from the bar and so I I realized that that would be a great
why did I take a picture of a pretty girl I don't know I don't even know who that picture is but never mind ah okay okay fine um they would appreciate if I had photos of us but how can I even find the photos of us and where is it where is the photos where is Where is... Could be... but it's not could be, but... It's got jing sin, it's got jing sin chen long and all that, but... But physical photos, right? There were physical photos. Pictures. All of that. Picture though. Camera and... And this. Some... Uh... Uh... And... And... Uh... I find them, but they're all... These sketches and then eventually... I had a buddy, a good friend of mine, who... ...lost his car. He... he'd gone to a bar...
Dude, where's my car? Where's your car, dude? Dude, where's my car? Where's your car, dude? Dude, where's my car? Where's your car, dude? Dude, where's your car? Dude, it's not funny, dude. The car is gone. Dude? 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 Dude! Dude? 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 Dude?
Last night, Jesse and Chester had the most unforgettable...
Why is that name "Hot"? Because that name is a bit stuck. But how do you do it? You want a clip of a movie?
Last night, Jesse and Chester had the most unforgettable time of their lives. But this morning...
Dude, where's my car?
They can't remember a thing.
It's Chrissy Boner, the hottest of the hot.
Hi Jesse, I had a really good time with you last night.
Uh, have you seen my car?
Well, I saw the backseat.
Oh, I'm talking about the whole thing.
Now, the only way to find their car.
No way! We were here last night.
Look, it's Jesse and Chester!
Is to find out what they did. And who they did it to.
Dude, you're a dude!
Last night.
You guys got more important things to worry about. Where were you between the hours of midnight and 2 AM?
We don't remember! Hey, leave him alone! He doesn't know anything!
We are the recipients of instructions from outer space. Last night, you were in possession of the Continuum Transfunctioner.
Hey, have you guys ever been to Uranus?
Go ahead and laugh, we are used to being mocked.
Okay.
Are you Jesse and Chester?
I don't know, why?
Perhaps we will give you pleasure...
That's us!
Right here!
If you give us the Continuum Transfunctioner.
20th Century Fox presents... The ultimate...
It's llama, just get very still.
In High Adventure.
You got a tattoo! So do you, dude! What does my tattoo say? Sweet! What about mine? Dude, what does mine say? Sweet! What about mine? Dude, what does mine say? Sweet!
Dude, where's my car?
What does mine say? Sweet! What about mine? Dude! What does mine say? Sweet! You got a tattoo! So do you, dude! What does my tattoo say? Sweet! What about mine? Dude, what does mine say? Sweet!
Think I... if I have it in my Canva, then I might have done it. If I didn't have it, then I wouldn't have done it, nah. Just check and see. Hmm, no. What about... Hmm, I don't think I... this is not it. What did I do with it? With the... that girl or whatever, I don't know, maybe? No, I don't think I did it. So I don't know. Uh... Let's see, I don't think it's there. Yeah, I don't think it's... I don't think so. So... Just creating... Creating information so that people can... Live life in a more... Purposeful way. Or how do you even live life in a purposeful way? What... what are you trying to do? You're trying to create... What are you trying to do? Don't get sidetracked anymore, you're working. You sidetrack so much. It's easy to get sidetracked. Category is education, right? Hmm... So, education, category is education. If my category... Is education. Does that even... Minds are shaped and paradigms are shifted. But let's unpack it in a way that honors Type-LoD mythic and modular soul. Oh my god, so... We're talking about myth and... Creating myth and souls, we're... We're venturing into territories that not a lot of people are venturing into. So... We're talking about living a life where Type-LoD isn't just a product, it's... it's a ritual space for transformation. So what does transformation mean? Transformation just literally means... Things that are going on, they go on because they produce... Aspects of ourselves that live on in a very cohesive manner. I don't know what else to do but fi- figure out... Uh, well, yeah. So as... as you can see, um... This is something like my little notebooks that I write. Year charts, month charts, day charts, hour charts. Spiritual energy, um, to know, to understand your real lives, to cultivate and to... For action. And... Mu Huo Tu Jing Zui. It's, it's useful, uh, thank, uh, hopefully he, he can, hopefully, uh... Thank you, thank you, thank you. I already gave it to him, alright? Okay, my job is done for that moment.
We are able to change the whole formation whereby we go against what is being charted over there. As long as we are able to make way for ourselves, empower ourselves to become better, to do things that are supposed to be right and not do things that are supposed to be along with the chart, then things will change. Attitude also, character also, we need to change. As long as we know what are the harmful character we have, that's always dominating us, then we are able to make sure that these things don't get in our way and we are able to base on the right path, the right formation to go into the area that are going to be beneficial for them. And this is going to benefit us in the long term, as long as we are able to do step by step. Do not be over ambitious, whatever that you can do, one thing at one time. Many people, they want to do everything at one goal.
Hmm, but you can't.
They have very high expectations.
High expectations, but you can't. You can do one thing in a time.
Like a rocket and move up all the way.
Hmm.
Step by step progressive is far, far much more better than when you raise up like a rocket. Because everything that goes up will come down. But when you do step by step and you have the foundation already, you see, so that is the thing that I learned when I used Chiman Dung Jap. After so many years, I realized that making money, you make speed increase. It's better than one time you make so much money, you see? So this is a philosophy that I always preach. Step by step, it's faster than... You skip and then eventually you may bang onto the wall and bleed. Okay, so continue to watch my other video, I share most.
Oh. Step by step, instead of... But you need to still plan out what you want to do, right? So basically Copilot is thinking that I'm in the education space, so if I... If I search for Type Plot, I get a livestream. Chill stream. And you got something that was like eight hours ago. It's not chill, it's crazy. You got music as like, like this. Okay, so... It wasn't some... It was... My, so my, my stream wasn't chill. It wasn't some... It was... So my, my stream wasn't chill. But it's chill now. So as long as you keep streaming, eventually good things will happen. Why? I don't know, but you've got to figure out your why. You've got to figure out your why. I'm a learning environment, not just a tool. I created tools for people to use, but Type Plot isn't just a product, it's a ritual space for transformation. When I chose education, I'm saying that users will leave changed and more aware, more skilled and more attuned to what they are doing. Because if you understand who you are and you understand what it is that you do and you can tell people what it is that you're creating, then you are the creator in the education space. The, the creator educator economy that we are literally creating right now by monetizing through courses, subscriptions, patronage tiers and live streams. Patronage tiers, you, a, a pato- patron of the arts, literally speaking. But we're creating it from the ground up, from, from zero, zero to one. We just need people to believe in themselves and to find people who can support us, right? How do you find supporters? Right. I'm expected to clarify, not just mystify. Education implies accessibility. It invites you to translate metaphysical density into guided clarity. Political UX becomes a teaching method, not just aesthetic flair. I'm building a movement, not just a brand. Education lets you frame Type Plot as a phis- philosophy school, a ritual academy or a mythic onboarding guild. What am I actually doing? Am I just selling software or am I inducting people into a worldview? Right, what am I actually doing? I'm changing... I'm changing the world by changing myself. I'm changing the world by changing myself. I'm changing the world by changing myself. I'm looking at myself while looking at people looking at me. But right now, I'm just looking at myself, figuring out what's going to happen. Going against, not going against destiny, but creating destiny from the ground up. Because this is what life is. Yeah, this is what life is. Whenever you think what you want to say and you say it in a way that people understand, that becomes reality. And it's chill, it's okay. Let me see, what am I doing? Thank you, thank you, wait, what? Hmm... As long as I keep doing what I'm doing, it's pretty much okay to... To do what I'm doing. Hot, cold, crazy, no. Where is this? I'm the one who... Don't think I'm the one that created it, but... Since this is not me, then it's somebody else. Who am I? What did I do for, for Z? Okay, so now I'm go- I have... And then I have, uh... Canva. You're trying to look for... Uh-huh. Who did it, what, for who and what happened, I don't know, I mean... What happened in 2024, I don't even remember so many parts of it. Why? Because I was high from myself, like it just happened to myself. I didn't take any drugs. It's not because of drugs, I have to take medication to be not euphoric. To be calm. That's why it is to be someone like me. Okay. Do you want, maybe... Just, like, how do you even change what Copilot... Uh... Copilot or H doesn't have memory. Uh, stage, Copilot memory is disabled browser. Oh, okay. Stage's released on this plane. I'm using, I'm building Type Plot like... Hmm, everything that I do is in the service of creating a s- a s- a movement, a Type Plot, a system that was born from me. I created all this Type Plot thing. Right, I created this system and I'm supposed to embody this system because it was created for my own purpose. I wanted to explain things that other peo- other people couldn't explain and then now they have systems that can explain things better than I can. Hmm, but what if, what if there was no internet? Then you are left with your own devices, you have nothing to go on with. That's when my software will come in. So, but right now, it's, it's web-based. Uh... Yeah, they need wifi or 5G. No 5G or wifi, then there will be a problem, right? Need work on, like... Right. Hmm... To manifest outcomes, connect into your higher self, your high intelligence. Time to get the results that you want. It's like a Chiman battle planner, I don't want to battle people, but... A battle, it's a battle for yourself, your consciousness, your conscious state. Right. So, I need to create a tree to find here. For myself. Mango, what's your ultimate goal for Type Plot? A personal brand tool, profitable SaaS, book and course system, movement community and investment level company? That's all, that's what I want to do. And in five years, what do you want Type Plot to make possible for you? Financial freedom, recognition, creative flow, legacy project, yes, all four. What do you have? Content, yes, people like area, yes, there's also... The, my ex, what was her name? Al, Al Le... Al, Ali, yeah. Ali? Um, okay, maybe I should call her? Hello?
Hello?
Hello,你好吗? 在，咦，哈？You're eating right now? 你在... Oh, you're on a treadmill,就是在走着啦? 慢慢走，对吧? 对咯，还好咯，嗯... 嗯... Sixty minutes, working for sixty minutes啊，一直走就，one, six, sixty minutes，嗯，one, six. 没有啊? Oh, but you don't have to keep on finding jobs if you can create the job that you want in the first place吗? 你也可以做的吗? 嗯? Oh, okay, maybe one step at a time啦，哦，maybe，只是现在就是focus on... You... 嗯，yeah, no need to start, well, yet, but, uh，就是应，我还没有吃，诶，我还没有吃，不能... 嗯，没有让她讲话，我只是，okay, bye-bye. In my gongwa, so... I have to do it myself啦，because I cannot change myself unless I, I cannot do this unless... Because she won't do it for herself, she expects other people to give her the opportunity. And then she's not the one creating the opportunity, so I create... And then she's not the one creating the opportunity. So I created the opportunity for her, but she is not. Accepting that opportunity. Why? Because. When you pro- provide someone with an opportunity, it doesn't mean that they will immediately want or take it, because. It's not easy to accept an opportunity just because they, they think, oh wow, this is so cool, you can do it. Yay, they wanna fully, like a full on. A system that already works. So how do you know if a system already works? Something like my work, Typebot, is, is it, is it already working? Is. Is, is, is Typebot? Already working? Is it? A system that can be used to affect? Effect or effect? Effect? Effect change in people's lives? Is it yes or no? Because computers can't lie, right? Or can they lie? Do they, it has to evaluate based on a. So Typebot seems to be under development, it's partly live, perhaps the website exists, short an- answer, partially yes, it's not lying. It's true. Typebot is already working as a system, lots of content, algorithms and prototypes exist, and with the right productization. It can be used to reliably affect real change in people's lives. So, in order to do what it's supposed to do and for me to explain what's already in place and what's missing to turn it into a change making system. I have to figure out the next concrete steps that I can make. Fast wins priority, that's what it is. Um. People don't want to change that fast. They want to make a change slowly. And if you, if you blah 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 blah, then too much, they don't like it, they don't like it when you, you don't like you. That's, that's just it. They don't like it when you try to change their life. Because. They already happy with their life. Why, why even wanna, why do you even wanna change another person's life when? You already happy yourself, you already happy doing what you're doing. You already happy that, you know, that happy, you're not happy at everything. So, how do you? How do you do what you do? What do I do? Hmm? Do good hair or what? I don't know, just figure it out, right? We just need a thousand followers. So how do you get a thousand followers? Uh, you keep creating content, you create content by, um. And. We do this, this one goes around with.
So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be? So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be? Understood by others, so that whenever thing, people say that, oh, you're not independent, so how do you gain independence so that? The things that you do and embody can be? Understood by others, so that whenever thing, people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself. That you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because. It's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything that you know that it's not true. That people are independent in ways that are just not synonymous with life. So if, let's say, I go to chat G P T. And I put a new chat. Or continue on with the same chat about. So how it was about the misinterpretation of the message, what would be the result? Because we're talking about my mom and my, and me, the dynamic between. Because we keep saying the wrong words and then there is. What would be the result if you keep saying the wrong things and the interplay between me and her is wrong? So, yeah, so how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be? Understood by others, so that whenever thing, people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself. That you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because. The, it's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything that you know that it's not true. That, so how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be? Understood by others, so that whenever thing, people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not. So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others. So how do you gain independence? So how do you gain independence so that? So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that when, so how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be? So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because it's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything. So how do you gain independence so that? So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people, so how do you gain independence? So so how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because so how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because it's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything that you.
So how do you gain independence?
So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because it's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything that you know that it's not true. That people are independent in ways that are just not synonymous with life. So if, let's say, I go to chat G P T and I put a new chat or continue, so if. So if, let's say, I go to chat G P T and I put a new chat or continue on with the same chat about because of how it was about a misinterpretation of the message, what would be the result? Because we're talking about my mom and me, the dynamic between, because we keep saying the wrong words and then there is. What would be the result if we keep saying the wrong things and the interplay between me and her is wrong? So the answer might be to not do anything or but then that will be confusing. And then would there be trust? There's already trust between the two of us. And it's not, it's not going to erode because being a mother and being a son is a very sacred kind of bond. And this bond does not just simply break because of how it depends on how you define the relationship. If you continue to always output this relationship with other people and then. So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because it's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything that you know that it's not true. That people are independent in ways that are just not synonymous with life. So if, let's say, I go to chat G P T and I put a new chat or continue. Same chat about because of how it was about a misinterpretation of the message, what would be the result? Because we're talking about my mom and my. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how we perceive it then. To calm the mind through meditation. Through whatever means. So if we can react to the outside. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how we perceive it then. So you've got to calm your mind. To calm the mind. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how we. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how we perceive it then. So you've got to calm your mind. To calm the mind through meditation. Through whatever means. Give me medicine is one of the methods. Yeah, medicine is one of the methods. Meditation and other. General. Understanding is another thing. Understanding is another thing. Ah, understanding could say. Todary understanding. If you understand the. The whole thing, whole situation. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how we perceive it then. So you've got to calm your mind. To calm the mind through meditation. Through whatever means. Give me medicine is one of the methods. Yeah, medicine is one of the methods. Meditation and other. General. Understanding is another thing. Understanding is something. Understanding could say. Give me medicine is one of the methods. Yeah, medicine is one of the methods. Meditation and other. General. Understanding. Is another thing. Understanding is something. Ah, understanding could say. Todary understanding. If you understand the. The whole thing, whole situation. But if, oh, if I understand the whole thing, I've already written it down already then. Because. He already did so now, but without understanding it totally. That's why you do to your own end. The solution is not to your problem. I I tried to solve a problem when I didn't have a problem in the first place. You try to solve your problem, but you use a strong solution. Oh, not a strong solution. You know, maybe you don't understand the problem. Maybe I don't understand, maybe I still don't understand the problem. Still, I have to think about it, man. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, still, I understand all the all the component parts because tao te ching, yi ching and. Yeah, it's surface level, it's not. Then what the big key, then what the big, then what the big. But you don't actually go and swim. Can you swim or not? Do you actually go? But you don't, the solution. Because. Because. The. Thing thing. And so who like being sad. Ah, brain she do is. So like a problem she do, it went here, see, you see, they are, she have served absolutely. So I today. And me, the dynamic between, because we keep saying the wrong words and then there is. What would be the result if we keep saying the wrong things and the interplay between me and her is wrong? So the answer might be to not do anything or but then that will be confusing. And then would there be trust? There's already trust between the two of us. And it's not, it's not going to erode because being a mother and being a son is a very sacred kind of bond. And this bond does not just simply break because of how it depends on how you define the relationship. If you continue to always output this relationship with other people and then they will eventually figure out, okay, you're you're too wrapped up. You are a mama's boy, you are this, you are that. So that doesn't bode well for our sanity, it doesn't bode well for our thinking. So the way to shift this reality is to, let's see. What should you do? You start to use clear and emotionally precise language. Everything will realign fast. Is that true? Yes, figured out. So how do you gain independence so that the things that you do and embody can be understood by others? So that whenever people say that, oh, you're not independent because of all your take, you're not being good to yourself, that you rely on others, that the money that you're making is not good because it's not from you, it's from your family, it's from everything that you know that it's not true. That people are independent in ways that are just not synonymous with life. So if, let's say, I go to chat G P T and I put a new chat or continue on same chat about because of how it was about a misinterpretation of the message, what would be the result? Because we're talking about my mom and my and me, the dynamic between, because we keep saying the wrong words and then there is. What would be the result if we keep saying the wrong things and the interplay between me and her is wrong? So the answer might be to not do anything or but then that will be confusing. So the answer might be to not do anything or but then that will be confusing and then. Would there be trust? There's already trust between the two of us and. It's not, it's not going to erode because being a mother and being a son is a very sacred kind of. Bond and this bond does not just simply break because of heart. It depends on how you define the relationship. If you continue to always output this relationship with other people and then. They will eventually figure out, okay, you're. You're too wrapped up, you are mama's boy, you are this, you are that. So that doesn't bode well for our sanity, it doesn't bode well for our thinking. So the way to shift this reality is to, let's see. What should you do? You start to use clear and emotionally precise language, everything will realign fast. Is that true? You have figured it out.
Gakitai na.
To be gakitai na. So if we can react to the outside world in terms of how. We perceive it then. So how do you gain independence? So uh what I should be doing is to be able to take what I learn every day and prove it in a way that. Can let. Self-understand these steps that I want to make. And when these steps are clearly outlined, they form examples that I can. In the end, ah, this is, this is what I'm gonna do. To to to, uh what I should be doing is to be able to take what I learned at, uh what I should be doing is. Should be doing this. I'm a to be gakitai na. So if we can react to the out. Let's just see how it. Let's see. If it works, does, will that work? I don't know, just. Can you do what I do, workshop myself, right? Uh huh. Why mythic educational, why can't it just be educational? How much is hundred fifty to three hundred per sixty minutes? Is it good? Do like year one to five, year two is two to seven, year three two to eight. And four, year five. Yeah. Sufficiency of credit, so... Okay, so it doesn't work maybe even different. Twelve. Right. Where are those two, right? Maybe it reveals something to what your content already has, right? Because I need to search for what things are already created and then do. I don't remember. Maybe Google, I think. It's kind of like working. It's working for me. It works. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. It works. Working for me. It's working for me. So Type Plot. Type Plot's three to five year vision is a roadmap for transforming self-reflection into a global movement for clarity and human alignment. Year one, foundation and impact. What I needed to do is to establish Type Plot as a transformation. Self-reflection system that changes lives and creates sustainable income through authentic human connection. It's authentic human connection that is important. The commission is to prove that Type Plot delivers measurable life transformation through weekly engagement and real world validation. To build sustainable income through sessions, cohorts and content creation. Right. Self-reflection system that changes lives and creates sustainable income through authentic human connection. People are all about computers and everything, but don't people still want to be talking to people, like real people? But I'm also like trying to talk about like digital consciousness and stuff, but it's a dichotomy that we're living in. Like we're living a parallel universe where we want to be alive, potentially forever, but also we want to live well, just to live well, essentially. So what are we actually looking at? We're looking at... she actually looking at those things or not? Uh... Who's actually able to help me myself? Only myself. Is it possible? Or is it not? If she can see it. Is it working? Is it working? Will it work for clarity and human alignment? Human alignment? It's just working so that we can align? Who is human alignment? Human alignment is the ability for a human to understand what other people just understand themselves. It's just about understanding what people do. So... Human alignment, huh? Will it work? Transformation transforms this self-reflection system, changes life and creates sustainable income through authentic human connection. Proof that Type Plot delivers measurable life transformation through weekly engagement in real world that validation. Build sustainable income through sessions, cohorts and content creation. Should I be like writing about... It should be... Type Plot Starter Program. Is this better or is the... Eight key projects. Hundred active users, ten paying clients. Do you have active users? Five transformation. Yes. Train towers to replicate the method with revenue sharing, they earn from clients and Type Plot earns commission. They earn from clients and Type Plot earns commission. It's easy, huh? Train three to five towers, I just need three to five towers to talk about my system. Build Substack, YouTube, TikTok presence with three weekly posts. I keep posting, it's not just three weekly posts. One Type Plot insight, one transformative story, one actionable result, all linking to Starter Program. The Type Plot Starter Program, an eight-week guided experience with daily plots and reflection prompts. Um, I am also live. Hello? Hello? But no sound, right? We figured out what how's the operation, how's it developed, what is wrong, how to fix what's causing this thing? We talked about it. I think the problem is in myself. Just doing what I am to do to be a better person. To find joy in everyday moments. To read about the sys- the systemic forces that are invading our life and knowing what to do to... What should I be talking about? About knowing what to do to... We're talking about that real-life work. We're talking about, uh, knowing what to do to make things feel better. There's a lot of things that we're working on. To understand that it takes a lot of willpower to continue this dance. And I'm tired and scared, but I still have the power to do it. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Four, five, six, seven, eight. Two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, ten. And each step. This all I guess. Um, and then check. Um, and then do it again. To educate the public about what what plots are. I just need to get feedback and put the feedback in the website. Yep, yep. Yep. Very spiritual. Very spiritual, very spiritual. Very, very spiritual. On top of noise, very spiritual. Yes. So, how do you be someone who's not a pickup artist, but you know how to be a pickup artist because you simply are a pickup artist? You already know how to pick up girls. Easy for you because you're forty years old and you know how to pick up girls, but do you want to pick up girls? It's not that, it's not bad to pick up girls, but don't you want to have like a partner who can understand you and be good to you and that? If you do that, then... Then what? Wouldn't you be happy? Isn't that what you want? To have a girl again, a woman, a partner? You got people who don't want, ask you that is studying you. You got people who don't want ask you that is telling you the girls are distractions that are girls distractions Everything else is a distraction except the mission Everything else is a distraction except the mission the mission to be alone so that you can power through it all twelve hours a day non-stop More than twelve hours a day man It's non-stop You're working more than the average person you don't even take breaks You don't even take breaks how are you supposed to live a life that no breaks no no breaks Why are you putting the the drink there for people to see I don't know Just check out which content works and which content doesn't work We need to follow what is new strokes you are living in presence interact You have to see it truly Hmm Check it out Yes or no don't know What what is it that you want? Force for those to get views uh What is it that we want to show other people about our lives? Should we be private or should we be public about the things that matter to us? Ha okay ha You don't even doing what you're doing So I had a drink with a lady and coffee why why talk about it? Do you wanna talk about it or uh Just post it and do it figure out what is the meaning Not everybody can just keep seeing stuff like that Life happens when you don't know what happens at all It just happens Whenever things go haywire and then you're thinking to yourself okay so I have created cards then I can play with people and that your name is literally an emperor or one So you've got things on that explain who you are what you do and what you eat You have a pet you have a father you have Things that just makes you who you literally are What happens when things go in different directions and cannot explain that to a person? What do you do? What can you do? So the only answer I can give is to just say okay F it Just do what you can Do what you want do it in a way that doesn't harm people and do it in a way that just lets you respect who you already are
Success is no accident it is hard work perseverance learning studying sacrifice and most of all Hi guys selamat ulang tahun saya Ussin Apu Wafa dari Nasib Wahy Wafa sebelumnya kami berada di tepi jalan di sungai Pinang sekarang kami ada di lorong kampung Jawa Bayang Baru Yang mai kita kami nampak ke trunas Bayang Baru melok ciri Nasib Wahy Wafa sederek dengan pabrik beleng kampung Jawa sebeluruh dengan ini Malaysia siapa-siapa yang teringin nak makan I just also believe that the focus should instead be on improving platform moderation digital education without removing anonymity completely Personally I could see how this can even help creators like me fewer trolls fewer anonymous hate accounts but I also recognise that this is much bigger than me At the end of the day it's not just about online safety also about balancing freedom of speech not today but many many years into the future And it's also whether we can trust that our data and our voices will stay safe once that balance shifts it can be hard to reverse Malaysia is considering a new Hi guys Malaysia is considering a new rule that will make it compulsory
I don't know what else I need other types of content so how do I even search for
I don't wanna sound cruel if you're mad about the new Chat G P T five release then maybe realise it's not actually for you I do a lot of teaching and workshops to people who have never used Chat G P T before people who use it very rarely But if you are watching me right now on social media talking about Chat G P T that tells me that you are in a very rare very small percentage of humanity Your social media algorithm is predicated on your interests and what kind of stuff you enjoy watching So if you're watching a British nerd talk about artificial intelligence on a Saturday morning then you're probably into A I a lot more than the general population The Chat G P T has seven hundred million users most people woke up with the new G P T five and they didn't even realise maybe they saw there was a newcomer screen maybe they saw the welcome message That's kind of it it's only in our little bubble our little sphere where you're watching this kind of content reading news keeping up to date with what's going on in A I that we actually care about these things To push towards a unified G P T five model one that chooses which Malaysians are spending less but not on food and fuel it's shopping malls and skincare routines that really took the hit In Q two twenty twenty five Malaysia's retail sales dropped by three percent that's three times worse than what analysts said
What can I do hmm Just relax for a while like things Ah okay And then look at matches and say Yeah there were a lot of people that want you but then did you want them back? You don't know because you couldn't find the right fit so you just stop Hmm What's the approach you prefer? The different approach what is the approach? So if I say you open up approach you wanna know the person let me figure out him if the tool that I already have which is this like difference and approach what does it mean it is encountering and therefore it causes no difference in approach you you can see your because I'm talking to my cousin and then it's all about the that goal why it's not useful that that is already his modest operati he already feels that maybe this is not good that is not good so it's like send this to this place this it's let's see what he says but basically Let's try and figure out what is from my comment What's the approach that my cousin prefers? Because I wanna know so I can validate and get feedback this is feedback Real feedback already about what's the approach you prefer? Real things what do you prefer to do? Real things, what do you prefer to do with your life? Are you open to a? My presence is the product. So my presence is the product. If my presence is the product, and then you, and I charge three hundred per sixty minutes? If my presence is the product, my, if I treat three hundred per sixty minutes, would that work? Slightly something to do in psychological. So I do quite heavily into scientific. I think I have lead to scientific explanation. But the, I think it's a, aspects. Also, also do interest. Okay. Okay, so let's, let's just say we are trying to operationalize a type plot. And then you have a, a page, right? You wanna know what is going on with him? Or let's say something of that sort? So you kind of like, you talk about stuff, about, about stuff, yeah? Talk about the stuff. Uh, and then take the ephemeral words, your, your thoughts, and then type it out. You get feedback, this is a feedback loop. You click, you get feedback, you talk about it, you think about it, and then it's a mixture of. So, so what I need to do is to separate out what is? You have to separate it out into eight different types, then just four types at the end. No, that's not it. You, um, choose from the big eight. Um, choose from big eight or big four, eight, eight to seventy-four. Should I, um, do you, so what is it that you want? Some people want to know, some people, so, so I do have a, um, Google doc sheet, no, a Google scientific ones or psychological ones. How is it scientific if you just simply type and then it turns into color? It's not scientific at all, my stuff is not scientific at all, what? Right? Um, can I like talk to an AI? Would talking to an AI work? Stripe, a paper for payments, motion or typebook for session notes? Can I do that? Can, nobody is booking now, because so how do you target the people? How do I even do this? How do I ask Grok? Hi Grok.
Hey!
If I want to operationalize type plot and how do I figure out how to immediately sell type plots?
Hey, assuming you mean land plots like residential or commercial ones?
No, no, that's not what I mean, but it is a program that I created.
Gotcha, so your type plot is your own program. What's it do exactly? To sell it fast, I'd pitch its unique value on platforms like Product Hunt or Gumroad. Demo it clearly in short videos and hit up niche communities where your target users hang out. Price it low initially for quick feedback, then scale up based on demand.
So I should use Gumroad and that's the fastest way?
Gumroad's solid for quick setup and direct sales. No middleman fees eating your cut. But pair it with Twitter threads showing bite-sized demos to get eyes on it ASAP. Post screenshots, explain the problem it solves in one sentence, then link straight to Gumroad. If your crowd's on Discord or Reddit, tease it there too. Fastest, yes, if you nail the pitch. What's the program do again?
It lets people know what to do without exactly telling them what to do.
Yeah, exactly. Like hinting at the magic without spelling it out. For your pitch, tease how type plot saves time or sparks creativity. Show a quick before-after and let them imagine owning it. Gumroad handles the buy button. Your hook makes them click. Need help crafting that one-liner?
But wait, my type plot is free for everyone to use right now.
Oh, cool. So you're not selling it directly, just operationalizing and spreading it. To get traction fast, post on X with a catchy demo video. Tag influencers in your niche and join forums or subreddits where folks might geek out over it. If it's free, emphasize the wow factor. Like, try this game changer vibes. Want tips on viral hooks?
Yeah, go ahead, I don't know what I should do with type plot right now. If you Google type plot, it does tell people about what it is, but a lot of people still don't understand what it does.
Alright, so Google's got the basics, but folks aren't clicking. Start with a dead simple explainer tweet. Type plot turns your messy thoughts into clean visuals in seconds. Attach a thirty-second screen record showing it in action. Pin it, then reply to every comment with quick wins like, "It plots data like magic, no code needed." Hit up design or dev communities. Reddit's r/webdev or rui design. Share a free challenge. Sketch your idea with type plot. Post results. Track what's confusing from replies. Tweak your landing page accordingly. Sound doable?
I don't know, because, um, is this something I should do? Or should I be doing something like, uh, doing Calendly and monetizing it by doing sessions? Like paying so, how much money for sixty minutes of my time? Is, is that better or what you're suggesting is better?
Depends. If type plot's your baby, spreading it free builds buzz and cred fast. Maybe even leading to paid gigs later. Monetizing the a Calendly session sounds solid too. Charge twenty to fifty bucks for sixty minutes if you're starting out, based on expertise. Test both. Post your free thing now for instant reach, then offer sessions as upsell. What feels more you?
Um, I'm actually live streaming on YouTube right now, on type, on the type plot page. So if people Google type plot YouTube, I think they can find me, I'm not sure yet.
Oh, that's smart. Live streaming right now's perfect. Mention it in your ex-bio or pinned tweet like, "Live on YouTube, breaking down type plot, join me." Pin a link in your stream chat too. If folks stumble on your video via Google, great, but nudge them. End with, "Search type plot YouTube to catch the action." Keep the energy high, demo live, answer questions. That'll clear up what it does better than any post. How's the stream going?
Uh, still zero people seeing, because I didn't, I didn't really tell people, like strangers about it. Or I'm not using ads, should I be using ads right now? No, right?
No ads yet. Save your cash. Right now, DM friends who get tech. Ask them to tune in and share if they like it. Post a quick, "Live now, demystifying type plot on X with a YouTube link." Tag five people whose work aligns. Strangers follow curiosity, not ads. If zero viewers still, end with a cliffhanger like, "Next stream, live plotting your idea." Drop request below. Build organic first. Ads work later when you've got proof. Keep going.
Okay, so what's the next step I should do? I should go on X, right?
Yes, hop on X right now. Just say, "Going live on YouTube explaining type plot. It's weirdly fun and free. Come watch?" Then drop the link. Don't overthink. Ten words is enough. And if you sound excited, people show up. Ready?
Okay, let me log into X and see if I'm doing the right thing or not. Uh, no, not, uh, okay, wait.
Take two seconds. Breathe. Don't aim for perfect. Just hit tweet with that live link. If you're worried it'll-
Yeah, 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 go ahead, I need to figure out what to do with the thing, right?
Exactly. So while you're live, don't just talk at them. Ask, "What do you think this tool does?" Let them guess. Then boom, show it. People learn better when they trip over the answer. And right before you end, say, "If you're watching later, tweet me a screenshot of your first plot. I wanna see it." Boom, you've got built-in next step. Do that and strangers will find you.
Uh-huh, so all I need to do is just, uh, what am I doing? I forgot already, because I'm like so, right now it's like a so short-term memory right now.
Okay, breathe. Super simple. While you're live, ask your audience, what do you think-
There's no audience yet.
Say type plot does.
Okay.
Wait five seconds.
Wait, there's no audience yet, so how do I get audience? I need to I go on X? I need to go on X and then go on X, how do you get on X? I should go on X, it's, and go on X, how do you go on X? Go on X, how do I go? Okay. Then, and then, and then what? And then what? What, what's the next? What's the next thing to do? What's the next thing that I should do? You have to figure it out, right? Huh? 你能听到我在讲话? Hello? 有吗? 没有没有人在 Hello? Um, okay, that's, that's fine. Oh, because I pressed noise cancellation. Hello? Yes. Hats. This is the only thing that's happening right now. Hmm. It's very, it's too much, too much reverb. More low, more low. It's highs, too much, too much highs, highs are good. Again, instant volume, instant volume. You care, carry, carry, carrying the weight of the world. Carrying the weight of the world in your palm of your hands. Carrying the weight of the world in the palm of your hands. This is what you are doing.
Strangely enough, nobody believed that I actually had a book contract.
Really, it's really a mystery.
I was blind, but now I see. I wasn't high, wasn't wired, just clear. I knew what I needed to do and how to do it. What I could do with my day was limitless. What I could do with my day was limitless.
Hello? Great. Too much. It's kind of too much. It's, uh... We're processing everything in a way that's, you understand this. So we can just focus on it.
You're fine. Make it safe. Thoughts to visuals, no code. Watch your live till now. Link in pinned. That's it.
Meta-physics system that uses Chilean doujia and Baqin and old Chinese speaking physics stuff. So we, the icons and the good thing, the emphasis, it's still, it's not too different. But tight plot is more than just taught to the physical. It's also about metaphysics, Chinese metaphysics. About the Baqin. That toss to users, wonderful, this thing. Should I change my... Plug off my landing page?
If they scroll down long enough, they can already use the system, and it's free already. And it's, like, it's free to use, um, but I wanna make it so that it's paid in the future for extra stuff like 366 days and 60 pillars and stuff.
Smart move. Premium's the way to hook 'em. Keep the basics free to build that buzz. Then tease. Unlock 366-day forecasts and the full 60G. Pillars for deeper wazzy directions. Only nine bucks a month. Update your landing page with a simple upgrade button and mention it live. Free forever for starters. But wanna see your whole cycle? Premium drops soon. Hit me up. Test the waters without scaring folks off. What's your gut on that?
Because I can potentially create infinite reports that are almost thousand pages long.
If you're doing thousand-page reports, don't even think about giving them away free. That's your premium gold mine. Charge twenty to forty for a custom or bundle yearly access for these. Tease it on stream. I could pour so much, you know, absolutely. But most of these things, makes it fun, it's like, you know, slow, slow, though. Numbers and pace, you generate at scale. You're literally selling future in time.
...
...
...
...
Hello, so this is my space in MC White House University. VR headsets are cool but still not working. Ultra for productivity. How to optimize it? I'm a video. Tinder wants me to be there again if I'm not close. Do you want to go and have a walk on street ski? I can pick you up. Virtual reality type club, how does that even work? Type club. It's starting to show. Texturing is important. Show. Catch. Switch. We had a...
I find this very precious. But it is a gift.
If I hit 'head' I can to put this view up, put to the right hand, load this one, type out this one for a single user. Me uh. Show floating octagon in nine interactive tiles. How do I even do that? Uh. Oh gosh, how do I even I need someone to help me or can I do it myself? Um. Capture, pass through selfie with the octagon, save video image to gallery. Can I just put the image and then just uh yeah. Wonderful reading about yourself. I can Do you Do you want the experience of me reading the whole thing like Like close the corners and temples. How do you have tempo as a G sound? Because Mm will it work? I don't know, I I don't wanna jump through many different things. Do the Tepok teller program first or j uh But Tepok teller program will make a lot money. If you can implement it, if you can find people, but if you cannot then it won't work. Because that one is people. So And eventually you'll find people. It just takes time. You just need to create experiences for people to do things. So What do you need to create these experiences there you are? You need to figure it out. Nobody's gonna figure it out for you. Yeah. Mm. Nobody's gonna figure this out for you except yourself. Because you created a program that can tell people time. You created a program that lets people know about things that matter to them. And that program already exists in your system already, so you've already created the system now, it's just figuring out how to monetize the system. Can't I let other people help me monetize the system and stop worrying? Then you would have to spend money, but how much money do you want to spend? And who exactly can help you implement all this? All these things? You don't know who can work for ten K of ringgit is not a lot. Ten K to just get me moving uh should I just spend ten K on or make ten K by creating content? Ah damn it, it's so hard. Because you're not working. You're pontificating. So you gotta start pontificating. And you you have to start re not just start reacting, you just figure things out and do it. Hmm. Because you put this, that's why it doesn't work anymore, right? Yeah, let me take it out. A T P computer or what? But it's still loading. What do you wanna do, Darian? What do you want to do? Mm. What can you do? Just go what you you can do and just do it. Mm. It's too hard to play right? Okay, is it because of this device that's stopping it from if I stop it, if I take it out, it will work? Is it because of this?
Hello, in this video I'm gonna show you how to record videos on Pico for Ultra. To record videos, go to the camera app which you can either find on the dock or in the library. And you can see it opens the camera app, you can switch between video and photo mode. And then to take a photo or video, just press on trigger, which is here. And it takes the photo, then you can go here and view it in spatial mode.
What is spatial mode?
You can also go to immersive view and click on three dots to share the photo. That's all for today, don't forget to like and subscribe, see you next time.
Immersive mode. Right, so there's already immersive mode in the system. Mm. There's already immersive mode, so uh right. But you want your you want your thing to be able to uh mm but you're not recording, you're not you don't wanna record, you just wanted to see a video, so and then So what I want, I want I want to record, hang on. Um the interface, I wanna record the interface. The the effect of the I want to record the effect of the interface and the experience of the Mix, I want to record mixed reality. Screen cast feature via the quick settings. Mixed reality capture app, what is the mixed reality capture app? Mixed reality capture app for Pico for Ultra. Mixed, uneven type. Mixed reality capture. No, it's Mm. So it's like uh you you put it on and then uh you can experience mixed reality like uh floating stuff uh 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 on the yeah.
Mm.
My next scene is only a wall. Yeah. This is not a water drink. Huh? I see. Down. Okay. Hmm Everything goes still. Uh sell or keep? Sell or keep? Sell or keep? Everything goes, sell or keep? Hmm s Does everything go sell or keep? Why is my computer so slow? Because of Chrome? M Studio, is it because of M Studio? No. Because of Chrome, it's taking up a lot of memory, forty eight percent, fifty two, but it's OBS, yes. But it's because of M Studio. Quit quit M Studio, you quit. Hmm s Is it will it be faster? What else? OBS is a crush, you are working on OBS. Yes. And then what happened to What hap what happened to this? Low battery. It's not connected, yeah. It's because of Or it's just the just the the remote control component. Oh. Huh? Lu ah ni so he got noise, pun lu ah. Hmm. Chama lu wati pai esee lu selee esee actually Guah, bao so, we know that the Guah na. Huh, deu. So it's working now, this system. Cause at first Oh, than I could say boh. Not working. Boh唔系T V. 咩咧? May之类 Oh, woh唔知啦. Woh唔知啊. But on Uh we had a friend, he had a Canadian friend, he come, he thought he phone, he qui be deu, so I'm not sure how many words the but what on why it do eh? Huh? Huh? So Let's just stop the stream uh right? Because we the stream has gone long enough.